Good morning. This is W Z R D Chicago eighty eight point three F M. And we have with us at W C R D via Zoom, Daniel Stephen Kleiman. He is running for the elected Board of Education in Chicago. How are you today, Daniel?
Oh, my gosh, what a day, what a day. I mean, what a day for the sun to be out. It's a glorious holiday. And and what a day for it. I'm feeling great. How are you?
Very, very well. Thank you. Daniel, first of all, tell us a little bit about that position before the Board of Education members were appointed by the mayor. But now, what has changed?
Right, right. So ever since Mayor Daley, the mayor has had control over the appointments of the Board of Education members. And there's, you know, there's been a fight ever since then to have accountability within the public school system. One that has the community participation, and that was obviously through elections. So really, I I know of, you know, members of the of the Chicago community who have been fighting for an elected school board for decades. And it was only recently that the pieces came together for what what can largely be considered a very successful consensus bill that passed. And it created a hybrid system that transitions into a fully elected Board of Education. And so what I mean by that is that there will be ten districts at first, made up of both elected and appointed members. And then in the next cycle, there will be twenty elected members, as the districts will be doubled. So this first iteration, I am running for one of the to be determined seats there.
So when you said first, there will be ten districts. So at the later, when the entire board will be elected, do you mean that there will be twenty districts?
Yes, in 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 no uncertain terms, the number is there. The only thing that is vague is how, everything else is vague. The number is the law, but you know, how they're drawn in 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 the manner of representation is entirely up to Springfield.
What is your background in education that made you want to run?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Well, actually, I started getting interested in education policy when I met the current chairman of the Board of Education, Miguel Del Valle. He was running for mayor of the city of Chicago at the time, and he was known as the education candidate. And so it was a pleasure to be involved in his progressive campaign at the time, because we got to explore a lot of innovative ways to to enhance participation in the CPS system. Unfortunately, Rahm Emanuel won, and that kind of only ignited me more. Because, you know, I mean, to be in Chicago and to be surrounded by the public school community at a time when there was a unilateral decision to close fifty schools was was formative in in my understanding of education policy and the impact that education and schools as as institutions can have on the foundation of a community. And so it was kind of with that understanding that I just got more and more involved in in local school matters.
And well, first of all, when you said that the Board of Education was the members were elected by, it started being elected and not elected, appointed by Mayor Daley, do you mean the first Mayor Daley or Richard M. Daley?
M.
Yes. And then when you you know, you 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 worked in local school councils and worked with Miguel De Valle. What were the issues then, besides the school closings that that you you felt needed to be addressed, but but were not being addressed?
No, that's great. That's a great topic in general, because it 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 touches upon just my philosophy of public education leadership. When I was first elected to local school council, it was at Nicholas Center High School over here in Edgewater. And it was, there was, we we had essentially a gang recruitment problem around the campus. And it was unsafe for students at times, unsafe for the community at times. And it was difficult for the school to do something about it. But as a local school council, we took an innovative approach and made our our blocks around us dog more dog friendly. And doing so promoted dog walking and community activity and community presence with within the neighborhood. And and this was this was some ten years ago. But it it left an impact on me on how you know, there there's hyperlocal matters that are that are best solved from hyperlocal leadership. Because I don't think, you know, I don't think some some board chair all the way, you know, in in Springfield, who's never served on a local school council, you know, fully fully gets that locality. And that's why I believe that when I want to be a leader in the school board, I want to be one who empowers local school councils and empowers that type of hyperlocal leadership. Because that that's where the true solutions lie.
What if it thought was the local school council issues that they wanted to address able to move forward with elected, not elected, the appointed school board members? Did they work with the local school councils or not?
In my in my experience, there was very little collaboration, participation, invitation. Ju- just very little dialogue. In fact, I I would say, I would say there was open disregard. I would say that I can recall being serving in a local school council at a time when all the locals, other local school councils were attempting to unite and form a common message. And even then, we were we were largely ignored. And so if you if you think about it, that's the largest elected body potentially in the nation, possibly in the nation, the local school, the collective body of local school council members is potentially the largest elected body in the country. And yet they're ignored.
That the local school council members tried to contact the board members at all, such as by email, by visiting their offices, et cetera?
Oh, well, I mean, so to be sure, there's public participation at meetings. And to be sure, I'm on I'm on lists, email lists, that that are calls to action. You know, people, I I I'm not the only one. There's there's education leaders all over the place who are soliciting and inviting action to to make these hyperlocal solutions. And that's that's my point, is there are efforts being made, there are attempts, and they are being ignored.
When the board had meetings and when it was time for a public comment, did any of the local school council members speak during public comments? And after they spoke, was there any follow up by the board to the comments?
Yeah, I mean, when I listen in, it's largely just, you know, it's it's, there's, I I'm never left with hope. And I think that's that's what drove me to run in many ways. Was just the notion of of there's, there are call calls to action. You know, the public is doing its job. They are, you know, we as a collective, we we are doing our participatory role. That should be respected, you know, I I mean, that's why, you know, in in my campaign, I'm starting basically with 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 a listening tour. I'm 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 saying that, you know, the 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 answers lie within the the parents and the teachers and the community stakeholders for the future of the district. I just I just believe that that's the type of leadership we need.
And when there were issues that the local school councils brought forth, could you like, if you have, if you have like about maybe three issues that the the local school councils were concerned about, I guess, including yours about gang recruitment, but were there other issues that that were just ignored? And then are those issues part of your platform?
Yeah, well, I mean, look, it's at at Disney, where where I served on local school council for two terms, we 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 almost became the first school shooting in the city. And it sparked a really meaningful dialogue of how to promote campus safety. Ultimately, the decisions on funding, where security cameras get placed, whether or not there are metal detectors placed, whether or not the school policy is clear backpacks only, those are local school council decisions. Or they're meant to be. At 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 my at my term, I was very lucky to have, I was very lucky that there was motivation within the administration to follow through and and follow through with a motion, you know, we we were able to hire a social worker at our campus. You know, there's things like that, that the local school councils have literal control over. You know, what impacts our students' day to day lives? And and things that that I think a lot of unsung heroes dedicate a lot of hours. You know, I mean, if you think of how much influence a principal has on the day of Chicago students, you know, there are parents and community members who pour hours of their time into reading surveys and scientific responses and evaluations, all of that principal's job. And they're holding that principal accountable on their own time. And 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 I think that deserves a lot of respect.
How are the parents able to access those surveys that they have a part in putting them out? Or was it, did they have to use the Freedom of Information Act to access those survey results?
Uh, no, as and part of the power and responsibility as as local school council members is you have the oversight of the principal. But but with that said, it it's remarkable how many calls for help there are from local school council members saying, hey, we want to do a survey, how do we do it? And there's no help desk that offers all these local school councils the resources they need to do their job efficiently, even though everybody knows how important it is. You know, the Board of Education has never taken seriously funding an office for local school council relations.
So the, yes, so there wasn't any money for the local school board, no resources for them?
Yeah, I mean, when local school council, they they have to budget themselves. They have, you know, in this in this school budget, they have to budget their own print line items.
Yeah, do they have a certain amount allotted to them that they could spend for a local local school council matters?
I mean, I think I think there, all budgets follow the same the same procedures that that goes through each year. And then it goes through the same process per each local school council. I honestly can't remember the exact numbers my during my term. During during my term at Disney, it was about but but yeah, I mean, that's part of the oversight that local school councils have is over the actual budget. And in fact, local schools councils, again, there's exact numbers where if the principal wants to spend a dollar amount over a certain amount, they need to go to the local school council. But not every local school council is, you know, has the tech savviness to to organize a Google survey themselves. And the the Board of Education doesn't take seriously having the resources to assist them. There are volunteers who signed up for the ability to hold their school accountable.
Right. Well, they they signed up for it, but if they don't have enough resources to do the job of oversight, then they can't do it.
Yeah, I I I mean, I think it's almost, you know, it 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 really is, it really is a shame because the local school council system is is so uniquely powerful in in the Chicago education system. So there's just so much potential that proper leadership in the Board of Education could take in in truly just empowering those local school councils and and enabling them to to do their true democratic purpose in in representative administration over their schools.
If you are elected as a Board of Education member, how would you be working with the local school councils?
I think that's a great question, because I've thought a lot about it. I personally like the idea of caucusing. I like the idea of building consensus. I I like the idea of holding large town halls with local school council leadership and building joint resolutions together. You know, I think I think leadership is more than what I've seen. What I've seen is, you know, people in positions of power attending a meeting, showing up, you know, shaking a hand, saying they were there, you know, and I think we need more than that. I think we need leadership that says, hey, let's all sit down at the table together. Let's identify our priorities together, and let's find solutions together. And I think that's an action, you know, that that takes actual steps. And I think those steps, those steps would be, you know, actually hosting and convening forums that meet with with local school council leadership. I think there would be structured caucus building, right, to build true consensus. You know, I I I just, I think it'll be more than the lip service of showing up.
And when you have done your listening tours, what have you heard from the community?
Yeah, actually, I've heard a lot, a lot, I've I've been surprised by a lot of the financial questions that I've been posed. And honestly, there are questions that that I think a lot of people aren't ready to to bring up. And so I'm 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 surprised when they come up kind of individually, one on one, and they never come up in the group setting. But but people do talk about the financial burden that CPS is about to under to 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 carry, becoming an independent entity of the city. And as the city transfers debt to it, the district will be under a tremendous debt burden. And that that is something that people are only mentioning in private, which is different than what we're mentioning in group settings. And in group settings, we're talking a lot about public safety, which I I think is is utmost important. I think CPS schools need to be sanctuaries for our youth. I think we talk about equity and 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 representation of diversity. I think that that's coming up a lot. And I think that needs to be just an immense priority, because we see how students' academic achievement is impacted by so much of their, you know, so much of what happens outside of the school. But but I I I will say, I've I've been surprised by the the number of comments about the economic standing of the district. And as I've told everyone, there's some answers that I don't think I would be able to approach until until I'm in the office. You know, somebody's got to look at the books, somebody's got to really understand the audit of what's going on there. But but when questions like that come up, I I do, I do understand the gravity. You know, a a school district has to stay solvent.
How is the current state of affairs different from what it will be at the Board of Education becoming an independent entity?
I I I honestly don't fully understand the legal equation that's going into it all. I don't know if I've talked to many people throughout the city who do. To be honest, I don't think I've talked to many people across the city who know of this election. You know, so I I think there's a lot that's happening, even among current elected leadership, that there's big questions that are currently unanswered. And I think I I think that there is an opportunity to kind of embrace the opportunity to find collective answers rather than try and rush through quick compromises that that really function only as Band-Aids.
Yeah, so when you earlier mentioned the independent entity, you meant the Board of Education, the elected Board of Education, right?
Well, because, yeah, because if you think about it, the Board of Education right now is a part of the, is a is a department of the city.
Yes.
So this will now become a fully independent elected agency, their body, elected body.
This is W Z R D Chicago eighty eight point three F M. And we have with us at W C R D via Zoom, Daniel Stephen Kleiman. He is running for a seat on the Board of Education of the city of Chicago. Daniel, when you mentioned that you've worked with others to try to find find issues and and work toward this this seat, who were who were some of your allies besides Miguel De Valle? Or was he an ally, or was he more of like, you learned a lot from him?
Yeah, I think I did learn a lot from him. You know, he left a big impact on my life. This was in twenty eleven, I think, or twenty ten, really. This was in twenty ten mayoral election, and Clerk Del Valle was invited to a debate. And it was a debate forum hosted by a group, and it was hosted in a hotel. And it was in one of the luxury, you know, ballroom hotel suites. And the service workers of the hotel were on a strike, and they were picketing in front of the building. And I don't know if you'll remember this, but I I remember very vividly. He wouldn't go in, he skipped the debate. And he he skipped the debate, he skipped the debate because he wouldn't cross the line. He said, I'm not going to cross the Union Line, I'm skipping the debate. So that was in twenty ten. You know, I don't know if he has, I I don't know, you know, that was then. But no, I mean, I've been I've been very blessed and privileged to work with a lot of great leaders over the years. I had a great time organizing block clubs in the old forty seventh ward with former Alderman Amea Puar. We actually wrote a block club manual, it's now downloaded across the country. It's 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 cool how many, you know, kind of random emails I'll get throughout the year about block club questions. And, you know, it's it's, you you learn a lot from people who who express that type of leadership. Alderman Puar showed the value of participation within the city ward. You know, I I've I've been very privileged to work with State Representative LaShawn Ford on legislation. And he's a great guide on how to effectively maneuver through the legislative process. I consider him, you know, a true teacher of the matter. So so I've been very lucky to to know several throughout the years, going back, like you say, all the way to twenty ten.
What was your role in in bringing an elected school board to fruition?
That's a great question. I I don't want to overplay it. I think I was one of many. I think I was in the room when debates were had, I think I was in the room when decisions were made. I think I was in the room when discussions were formulated, but I was just in the room. I was one of many voices, you know, there there were a lot of people in those rooms who who contributed a great deal. And some who had been in that room for, you know, a decade longer than me. So, you know, as I as I take pride in what I was able to contribute, I take great humility in knowing how much others contributed. I I presented a lot of discussion in how maps should be made in a way to empower local school council participation. I really did my best to drive that discussion home in in the debate that 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 kept present over the years. And and I think what ultimately happened was was the culmination of years of work of multiple different stakeholders that had been in in the room for a very long time. And ultimately, I think that's what that's what the bill came out to be. You know, it's 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 a hybrid model, it's half appointed, half elected. And I think that's representative of all the voices who are in the room.
Yeah, you could give the listeners a little description about how the elected process will be, like, who is elected, who's appointed, and 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 the two year cycle.
Yeah, that's a great, that's great. So the elected process is up in the air because they don't have the districts. Since they don't have the districts, they don't have the numbers, and they don't know the petition count. So there's a lot of electoral logistics that that are entirely up in the air, just because it's so brand new. It's it's such a brand new, brand new law. The real, the the real question will be dividing between, you know, who gets appointed and who is elected. I think that's the discussion now that's 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 brewing, because I think there's a, there's kind of a divisive understanding over over whether or not the districts will each have one appointed and one elected, which is what I believe to be the case. But there's also some understanding that that the appointed members will have their own districts as well, which which I'm 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 not entirely sure how that would work. But the election itself will be in November twenty twenty four, which is the same time as the presidential November. Which is the same time as the presidential November twenty-twenty-four election. So it will be the same ballot as the president, uh, the senate, the governor, the congress. Um, you know, all the way down. Um, so honestly, I suspect that this will be one of the last questions. I suspect this will be one of the very last ballot questions, even after all the judges. Um, so, so in, I, I, I think I will really depend on every single vote I can get. Um, because I think it'll be a very down ballot, very small, um, very unknown race. Um, and I think, I think, um, you know, especially being crowded out by the real big ticket items like the president and the governor. Um, that, that, uh, uh, the gov- uh senate, sorry. Um, uh, I think then that will, that will really a- add some uh, add some flavor to this election.
So when you are, you, you are running now and you're not yet, um, sure about what the map will be. Is there a chance that uh, uh, the, y- your map might, uh, where you're running might uh end up being an appointed uh. Position, and if that would be the case, then are you able to like move over to the elected position side?
Yeah, see, I, I think, I mean, my understanding is that, uh, you know, that, that can't happen, but I, I've heard people say that that can. Um, and I think that just highlights the issue that there's a lot of confusion. Over, over what the law says and over what the law means to say. Uh, but, um, yeah, I, it's true, I don't know what district um I will, I will be running in. Um. I personally feel like that's, that's part of my argument. Um, is I feel I am extremely qualified. Uh, I feel like I am, um, extremely empathetic as a candidate with disabilities. To understand the reality of uh a lot of students in CPS. Um, and approach matters with empathy that I think leadership has been uh missing. Um. So, so I, I. My understanding is that I, you know, I, I think I will be best in whatever district uh I'm possibly drawn in.
And so right now, there's not even a number of, uh, n- no specific number appointed to your district, yeah, but you just, uh. Generally, you're in Edgewater, right, and uh what, what your district cover potentially?
Yeah, I've seen maps that include Edgewater and Uptown, I've seen maps that include Edgewater and Rogers Park. Um, I've seen it go as far as West Ridge and Andersonville, um, into um Ravenswood. Uh, so I've seen a lot of different maps. Um, but, but I do know for certain, I, I will be on, uh, you know, the Edgewater Central area where I live. Um, and, and I know I'll do my best to, to represent here and, and truly all of Chicago, wherever I represent.
And so the maps that are being drawn right now, who, who are the entities that are trying to draw the different maps? And uh, how, how will the final map be chosen? Have you any idea?
Uh, no, I mean, I think anybody can send a map, I think it's literally public participation. I, I, I mean, honestly, I've been focusing so much on my own campaign, I've not been, I've not been too buried in what, what others are doing for the legislation.
So this legislation was so new, do you know approximately when it uh was signed by uh Governor Prisker?
Oh, no, just, just like, it, it's a brand new law, just signed, this is the very first time.
It was signed this year? In twenty-one-three?
No, la- last, last, not, not this year, last year, I believe, I'm, I, I'm not sure when the exact signature was added.
And, okay, and who was the main sponsor for the bill?
Uh, yeah, it was Senator Marwick, who is a great, I, I'm a big fan, and I, I, I look forward to working with him, he was great, yeah, yeah.
Senator Marway, uh, what's his first name and what district does he represent?
I, I don't know his district count, uh, Senator Robert Marwick, I honestly can't remember his number, um, but he's a great senator.
How, can you share how you started working with him, was it on account of uh, uh? Uh, your, you know, your frustration with the, the local school councils not being able to uh. Do the work or how, how did you start working with Senator Marwick?
Yeah, he's just been a terrific legislative leader, um, he's always stepped up for matters on, on Chicago education policy. Um, and he was able to knock it out.
Is he part of the mapping process?
Uh, I, I honestly, I haven't, I ha- there's a committee set up, I'm not sure who's on the, I haven't been following too closely, you know, as I've. Reached out to represent, to, to, to voters in my area. Um, I've become more focused on having the one-on-one conversations with, with people I think could vote for me.
Of course, that's the most important, and uh, but uh, I know that uh. A lot of people are, are concerned about the map and then uh the voters that are voting for you, of course, they, they, they understood to, understand too, right, that the. Uh, the map is not yet the, not yet in place.
Right, yeah, I mean, and that's, that's exactly, I mean, I feel very confident in saying that to all Chicagoans. I will do my best and be the best to represent you on the Board of Education.
Okay, um, and you could just, um, uh, there might have been some listeners that uh tuned in a little later. Tell us again about your platform and before we sign off.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a terrific, I appreciate to close on this. Um, before signing off to just, you know, my, my platform is one that says that CPS has lacked accountability. Because it's lacked the transparency of listening to the community, right? You know, I started my career in education on local school council of Nicholas Center High School. Because I had an experience growing up as a student with disabilities. And I know what it's like to have the need for resources. And at the same time, I know what it's like to have received those resources. And I know what it can be like if we were able to get every school to provide every student with the resources that my school was able to provide me. So that's why I'm taking the next year to provide a listening tour where I can build a platform. That does represent the needs and, and, and ideas and values of our parents and teachers and community members of CPS. So, uh, I mean, that's what I'm about, um, and that's why I'm just excited to be running.
That's another question popped into my head when you were talking about, yeah, you, uh, you were a student uh with disabilities and you understood how uh the school had helped you. When you were serving at the L- uh, LSC, the local school council, were there any other uh board members that were, the school council members that were also uh. Involved in, uh, in your concern, were any other maybe uh. Uh, school council members that were also uh people, student with, uh, students with disabilities or persons with disabilities and. Interested in advancing more resources for students with disabilities.
Yeah, yeah, this is a good way to close out, I mean, truly, I think the value that local school councils provide is that everybody was able to br- to bring. What everybody uh was bringing as an individual. I mean, there is, there is people who are bringing in things that were impacting um the neighborhood, their family. Um, uh, you, you know, all over the, the gambit of issues. And I think that's the value that needs to be promoted. Um, a- and that's, that's the value that I would promote is, is that everybody, uh. Everybody needs to be able to be empowered uh to bring what they need to bring to the table, absolutely. But thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
And if listeners wanted to uh contact you, or maybe uh some follow-up or some questions, how could they contact you?
Yeah, visit votefordanielchicago.com. There is a form there that has uh checkboxes and questionnaires. And it allows you to send it directly to me so that I can respond directly back.
Thank you so much, Daniel Kleinman, who is running for uh. S- s- Board of Education member in the, in City of Chicago, it's a new position. Thank you again, Daniel.
Thank you, thank you, have a great day.
You too, thank you.